Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our regular meeting, the Ojai Planning Commission for Wednesday, November 4th, 2015. Members of the public wishing to address this planning commission on items appearing on tonight's agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card and file it with the secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state their name, address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the commission, not the audience. While planning commission is in session, all intendants are expected to maintain order and decorum and obey the orders of the chair. Roll call, Sheri.
Merk.
Here.
Jagiello.
Here.
Zabella.
Here.
Nolan.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Nicklin.
Here.
Lajowski.
Here.
Okay, Commissioner Lajowski, would you lead us in the pledge?
Yes. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, public communications, and this, as stated earlier, this is the time we set aside during our planning commission meeting for members of the public to address the planning commission on items of city business other than those that are scheduled on tonight's agenda. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff or placed on the subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. So I have before me no card speaker cards, so I'll put it forward to the -- please come forward if you'd like to address the planning commission. State your name, and we'll go from there.
My name is Vina Lustato. I live here in Ojai and own a business called Soul House Design. Without a doubt, there is a dire need for affordable housing in Ojai. Many people want to live here, but most of us cannot afford it. Development guidelines are restrictive, and rightfully so. We want to preserve the natural beauty of Ojai and minimize development of multi-story structures. The dilemma of affordable housing is not unique to Ojai. Many cities are confronted with soaring housing costs. It's time to look at alternative housing solutions. Many peoples throughout the country are realizing the benefits of living smaller. A movement that is growing rapidly is the formation of tiny house communities. Tiny houses are sprouting up everywhere, and they are proving to be valuable opulence for economical housing developments. A tiny house community can address issues not only regarding affordable housing, but also environmental impact. Tiny houses are often designed to be off-the-grid, with solar panels, and equipped with graywater systems, composting toilets. Tiny houses can mitigate the water crisis in Ojai. The quality of tiny houses can be designed at a high level with an artistic quality that is compatible to Ojai. I believe that tiny house communities can also be a financial benefit to the city of Ojai. It can serve as a model for sustainable communities, and Ojai is a perfect place for it. Many tourists come to Ojai looking for eco-villages, and we can be the first sustainable tiny house community in California. I can assure you that many people will be lining up at the door. As a tiny house dweller, I can attest to the countless benefits of living in a tiny house. Many residents have expressed interest in forming these communities here. However, our zoning ordinance needs to be reassessed to allow for tiny houses as permanent residents and developed as part of a community. On Friday, November 13th, you are invited to attend a tiny house community workshop. This half-day workshop will help city officials understand zoning laws to form sustainable communities and vibrant neighborhoods. We will present planned communities that can fit the artistic character of Ojai, and the workshop will be led by two women who currently live in tiny house communities and are knowledgeable and experienced in forming these communities. We would be honored and delighted if you could engage in discussion and explore this possibility in Ojai and beyond.
I have a question for you. How many square feet is your tiny house?
It's 140 square feet at the first level and 80 square feet on the loft level.
And it's on wheels, is it? Is it trailered in?
Correct, it's on wheels. Built on utility trailer.
Right. Thank you. Go ahead, Mac.
Just one comment. I love the idea, and it's definitely something that we hope to be studying further in the Sustainable Building Ad Hoc Committee. So, I look forward to discussing that more with you, and I hope to make your workshop as well. Thank you.
Thank you. May I pass the flyer for the workshop?
Sure. I don't see anybody else coming forward to speak to the planning commission, so we'll move on to our consent items. The first of which is the minutes of our regular meeting from the planning commission of October 21st. I'll move, approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Merk.
Yes.
Jagiello.
Yes.
Zabella.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Foster.
abstain.
Nicklin.
abstain.
Lajowski.
Yes. Our next consent item is disclosure of site visits, and we have no agendized items tonight to discuss that require a site visit due to the continuation of the hospital project. So, we'll move on to the public hearing item, which is a lot line adjustment, LLA 15-01, design review permit, ERP 15-03, and tree permit, T15-12. For the merger of two lots into one, demolish an existing 66-bed comprehensive care center and construction of a new single-story 60-bed comprehensive care center replacement facility, including additional parking, new secondary access drive, new landscaping, and removal of approximately 53 trees at the Ojai Community Memorial Hospital located at 1306 Maricopa Highway, APN 019-0-110-040-335 and -345. The general plan land use designation on the parcels is institutional recreational, IR, and the zoning classification of the parcels is institutional recreational, IR1 district. A categorical exemption has been prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act under Section 15302 of the SEQA guidelines. Property owner is Community Memorial Health System, and our representatives are Hidi Lashkari, Chief Administrator Officer, Ojai Valley Community Hospital, and applicant Joey Creglan, Architect of HGA Architects Engineer. We'll hear from staff.
So, as it indicates in your staff report, a small staff report before you tonight, that we're asking for this item to be continued. I will make one amendment to the staff report. Instead of November 18th, the applicant has asked for it to be continued to the first meeting in December. And I think that's the second, correct, Sheri?
I believe so.
Yeah. And as we've indicated, you know, we mutually agree with the applicant, and we'd just like to let, if you need to know additional information, you know, they're working through some financial issues on their part, and we're working along with them to make sure that the project has designed before planning commission is when they can actually execute. So that's what we're working with.
Okay. So, this requires a motion for continuance, then?
I'll make a motion that we continue the lot line adjustment, LLA 15-01, and design review permit, DRP 15-03, and tree permit, T15-12, for continuance to the December 2nd, 2015 planning commission meeting.
I'll second that. Discussion? Roll call.
Merk.
Yes.
Jagiello.
Yes.
Zabella.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Nicklin.
Yes.
Okay. That brings us to our discussion item for tonight, and it's all about the second unit ordinance. So, I'll just turn it over to you, Kathleen.
Okay, thank you. So, before you tonight is sort of a continuance of the last discussion we had, I think was, which was not the previous meeting, but the one before that, the latest one in September. You were given different sections of government code pertaining to second residential units, and some information on the city's general plan, et cetera. Pursuant to the minutes and what was discussed at that meeting, we provided you with this staff report that indicates the goal, what goal, overall goal was to increase affordable housing stock in Ojai, and the discussion, or the issue items that were identified at that meeting. In addition to the items that, the issue items that were identified, there were some requests by the planning commission to provide some ordinances from different cities, those have been provided to the commission, to invite foreintendents, representative from the Ojai Valley Sanitation District, and we have him here, Mr. Palmer here, for your convenience, and to ask for him, he's here available for any questions you have for him. And then historic information on the second unit. So, we've tried to accommodate all your requests. In addition, there was a lot of questions about the housing element. We've put excerpts from the housing element that provides you an overall sort of basis for what the general plan says about meeting different needs, different housing opportunities, what's provided, what's not provided, and the demographic information, et cetera, all from the general plan. And we hope that that provides the information to facilitate a wildly, wild, exciting discussion over second residential unit ordinance. And so I'm open to any questions or any clarifications on the information provided. I see a hand up.
Yes, can you explain to us how the Housing Action Plan came to be, and what type of authority does that plan have over the decisions of the city council and/or the planning commission?
Are you talking about the housing element?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, the Housing Action Plan is within the housing element, yeah.
So, I don't, I wasn't here when they did, so I can't tell you how it came to be, so I don't have history personally, unless I researched it, in which I didn't. But, you know, the housing element is mandatory element of the general plan. General plans, every city has to have a general plan in this, in the state of California, if you're going to have a planning commission. That's your leading document. So, in the hierarchy of planning documents, the general plan is the top of the chain, and everything falls from that. So it is, you know, the foundation, or the bible, lots of people use different words to describe it, but everything has to be then vertically consistent with the general plan. So you can't change something via the zoning ordinance to change a general plan. The general plan, and particularly the land use, can only be amended four times a year. It is meant to be somewhat flexible, but very steady. Zoning ordinances can come and go and change all you want. So it is meant by design to be a leading document, a foundation to which the city governs itself as far as many things. You know, the general plan has lots of things in it, you know? Circulation, land use, housing element, you know, ours has a safety element, a conservation element, which has all our protection issues, such as the historic and archaeological resources, et cetera. And then I think we have a parks and recreational element. So, these things now are adopted, and housing element's a little bit unusual because it actually is adopted and certified by Housing and Community Development, state of California. So, you know, it's pretty much set in stone now at this point, and this one runs from, I think, till 2021. And so what happens is, you have these policies down in your housing element, and then you're to do an annual report on where you're meeting those goals. Most cities, the housing element is somewhat kind of, has an evolution sort of similar to a lot of state mandates. Cities didn't always do everything that was required of them, and then it became, you know, kind of an issue. So, they have tied a certified housing element to a lot of ways you get funding, through grants, et cetera, to kind of incentivize cities to actually comply, because it is a state mandate somewhat unfunded and costs the city a lot of money to maintain a viable housing element, and then the implementation policies, and then to do the follow-up. But what happens is, you know, they determine through regional means the regional housing needs, and then they apportion them through to the different communities within the county. And so we know what we're supposed to meet, and our regional housing growth needs are here, that's on page three of 12. That sets down what we need to accomplish between 2014 and 2012. And then that also then somewhat dictates how successful you are in then getting your subsequent housing element certified the next time around. Because the next time turnaround, you know, they look at why you're not meeting your goals and why you're not providing affordable housing, or not meeting housing needs, your fair share of what needs to be provided to a growing, ever-growing larger population of the state of California. So, with that said, in kind of a long, short version, and I hope kind of a little bit of clarity, it is important that we look at these policies and we follow these policies and try to meet, and so you would, so like I said, this, from the source is SCAG, SCAG's the entity that provides the arena in this community, and we would be providing 87 very low, 59 low, 70 moderate, and 155 above moderate housing for that period of time between 2014 and 2021, and that amounts to 371 units. And you can see throughout the housing element that, you know, there's somewhat cited, I think, 2,000 and some odd sites within the community that provide moderate or above moderate. It's usually the other two categories, and extremely low, I don't see extremely low in this thing, I don't know if it was cut off, but even with extremely low income levels, those are the ones that are really hard to provide in a community. Those are the ones that everyone struggles with, and I think that's why you see the city pursuing affordable housing opportunities with people's self-help, because it does need a kind of a nonprofit cooperation, kind of a nonprofit city partnership often to provide those opportunities, especially with the funding that's available in today's, you know, today out there, you know, with no redevelopment agencies and funding scarce. Tax credits, as they will tell you, are very competitive. So, with that, just, you know, you have to look at all the policies and make sure that anything that you're changing in your zoning is compliant with the housing element. So, is that, did I have to?
That was excellent.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. I almost want to applaud.
Thank you.
Did you write the book? I think it's important to make the distinction that it's the city's responsibility to show that we can meet how we meet those numbers, the 371. Now, whether or not we actually physically meet those numbers is another, is a whole nother deal, and that, you know, doesn't necessarily have to happen in order to comply with our housing element.
I think you need, yes, I think that to say it, we need to show that we have, we provide opportunities, and that we have, you know, that we've removed impediments to, you know, someone actually coming in and building those things in our community, but we don't have to build them. So it's very, it's just really important that, you know, they look at it more, and like how you were saying, when they look at the housing element, they're looking that you have land available, that your zoning ordinance isn't overly burdensome to that, you know, to restrict affordable housing or affordable housing opportunities. But certainly, the city, you know, city doesn't have to go out and build them, they just need to have policies in place that facilitate development.
Okay.
Chair, I have a comment or a question in deference to our guest here, Mr. Palmer from the sanitary district. Is there a way that, or I'm just asking the commissioner, is there a way that we could possibly get his section out of the way first? Because this might be--
Well, I was just gonna invite him up, actually.
Sorry.
Because I figured we could start there. So, Mr. Palmer from Ojai Sanitary District, welcome.
Thank you for the invitation. Good to see you. And the audience, I guess.
And the virtual audience.
Yes, right. Everybody's watching, right?
Yes.
So, I put together some comments. I watched a couple of your meetings to get a flavor of the types of issues that were coming up and questions that are coming up. And I know in the past Sheri and I have talked, as well as Kathleen, about, you know, how we interact and cooperate in housing kinds of questions. And I put together a sort of a package of stuff that I wanted to hand out to you. One of the questions, and I wanted to give you a little background on our second unit ordinance, because I think it leads to some commonalities. We've been doing this for about five years. We had some past history going back 10 or 15 years, where there were, there was evidence that there were lots of units that had never paid connection fees to the sanitary district and were not paying current sewer service charges, meaning they were discharging sewer waste to the sanitary district and had never paid for it nor were paying for it currently. And so over time, the board started talking about it and came up with an unpermitted ordinance that has been in effect for about five years now. And we've looked at about 400 properties in our service area. So our service area goes all the way from about the Pepsi plant down on the freeway, all the way up to St. Joseph's, and anybody that's in the entire valley that's on sewer is coming to us. There are no other sanitary districts. So there are still quite a number of septic systems, and that will be a topic in the community about algae and nutrients and discharge to groundwater and EPA regulations, but that's not something that we regulate at all. That entirely comes through the Environmental Health Department. We don't regulate septic systems. So we serve about 25,000 people, and as I said, we've been doing the second unit compliance program for about five years and looked at 400 properties. And people question, you know, what kind of properties are we seeing? We're seeing quite a few very nice properties. I think we've only seen of the 401 that I would qualify as a boarding house, you know, one kitchen and multiple bedrooms. And I think we've only seen one that, in our opinion, was really substandard, was really a health and safety sort of, you know, almost just a shack shed. We did not permit that. We just stopped and turned it over to the county building official, it happened to be in the county, and said, you know, this is something that your code enforcement needs to look at. This is not something that we're going to continue to do an administrative process on. So of the 400 units, we've only seen sort of two unique ones. The rest of them are very nice. Many of them have granite countertops, custom cabinets, stainless appliances. We're not seeing sort of a lower level of quality spec level on finishes. We're seeing a lot of very nice things. We have seen a number of their houses. One of them that I was in six months ago, it was a large, about a six-bedroom house, and they put a wall down the center and two front doors and two kitchens, and it was, you know, a very, almost classic split house, like a duplex. So we've seen a wide variety, garage conversions, but they're all very, very nice. So what I put together was a package of pictures, so you see what we see. I also put in here a couple of excerpts off of VRBO from two days ago. We find quite a few second units on the vacation rental site, people advertising second units, and we go visit them. Also, in classifieds from the Star News, just a rental on what a unit is renting for for perspective. And then on the front, I've put together a little bit of some numbers, because one of the questions that comes up about our fees, our fee is, right now, is $16,498. That's what it is today. We have, our board has approved three payment sort of plans. One is five years, no interest. The second one is 10 years, 5% interest, and 15 years, 7% interest. So at 15 years, 7% interest, that equates to $148.29 a month for the sewer connection fee only, not the sewer service charge, but the connection fee. So if somebody came and bought one today, in 15 years, they would pay that $148 every month, steady, whereas rents would increase, you know, hopefully over time. So, those are the numbers. So I've put all this together in a package, so you could see what we see, and hopefully I'm there for everybody. Because those are some of the questions we get. What about the fees? What are you seeing? What are you permitting? One of the things I wanted to sort of talk about and does come up frequently is the definition of a dwelling unit. There's a lot of unique terms out there, but I think it's kind of very simple. There's efficiency unit, and granny flat, and guest house, and studio, and this and that, and widget this. Really, it comes down to the kitchen. What we have, what we have--
Oh, one more.
Describe, everybody get one?
I got two, because I need to. I got two.
So, we have, we at the sanitary district have defined a dwelling unit. It's a very common definition. It's used in the California Water Code, it's used in cities all over the state. It's sometimes called an equivalent dwelling unit, an EDU. We call it a capacity unit, but it's the same essential description. And that is a box, whether it's above a house, or a separate unit, or part of a house. And it has a bedroom, it has a bedroom, a bathroom, and it has a kitchen, or a food preparation area. What makes something a kitchen? A kitchen is a sink, a stove, and a fridge. Any two of those make it a kitchen. So if you have a bedroom and a bathroom, and that's it, it doesn't even hit our radar screen, there's no fees, there's no nothing. And why do we come up with this definition? Really, it's an independent living facility. If you have a guest house, and the common definition of a guest house, a lot of times in planning terms, it doesn't have a kitchen at all, and so you have the people getting their food out of the main house, the mother-in-law, the classic place. So, if it has a kitchen, it can be an independent facility, and then it meets the definition of ours as a capacity unit, and it meets the common definition of an equivalent dwelling unit. This is, I'm going to read from, and it's in the package there, it's the third, no, I've got it here, I didn't put it in the package. This is Section 28-04-590. This is from the City of Santa Barbara's zoning code. "A residential unit may be declared by a community development director when a building or portion thereof is configured or occupied for residential purposes, whether permanent or temporary, and contains elements evidencing separate residential occupancy." And then it goes through a list of what may or may not be included. Those are a dishwasher, a sink, a toilet, a bathing facility, a separate phone line, countertops, separate mailbox, sort of things. So, what we're really looking at as a capacity unit in our definition, and a equivalent dwelling unit in many other zoning-type discussions, is a self-sufficient structure. Now, you can call it whatever you want to call it, efficiency unit, granny flat, guest house, but if it has that bedroom, bathroom, kitchen combination, it meets that definition of capacity unit to us. If it doesn't have a kitchen, many of these 400 that we've looked at, it doesn't have a kitchen, we document it and move on. In some cases, we go out and visit these structures, and the people say, oh, I don't need it as a separate kitchen, I use it as an artist's studio, or I use it as something else. And we say, if you take out the elements that make it the kitchen, usually that's the stove and the fridge, and we document and inspect that, then we move on, and there's no fees due. So we see somewhere people want the second unit, we see somewhere that people have the definition of a second unit and take it out. There's all variations across the board. Of the 400 that we've seen, there are many, many, many different flavors of sorts of structures, but they all sort of look the same, as you can see from the pictures. They're, you know, nicely done. We have a couple of people who know the rules, and we go visit them, and they take the fridge and the stove out in the garage. We inspect it, and it's, nothing's there, and we're not back in our office, and the fridge and the stove are reinstalled. Because the tenants call us and tell us that. But the tenants say, don't do anything, because if the landlord gets mad, they're going to kick me out. So, we know who these people are. It is what it is. We do what we can, we're going to follow some appropriate reasonable procedures, and, you know, I guess some people are going to figure out a way to circumvent the rules. But, it all centers around this definition of a dwelling unit. Bedroom, bathroom, kitchen. If you remove the pieces of the kitchen that don't make it a kitchen, then we move on, it's not anything that we concern ourselves with. So that's kind of what we're doing. That's kind of the definition that we followed, the process. It's very methodical, sometimes it's slow. Sometimes it's slow. We send out about, we do about four groups of letters a year, uh, based on the, the list that we have. And those, each tranche of letters is anywhere from twenty to forty. And we push them in groups and that is continuing, um, to this day. We get a lot of calls. We get a lot of complaints. We get, uh, we get the, the information from a variety of sources and it essentially comes down to a situation in our mind of fairness. And that is if there is an independent living structure, whether it's a second unit or a first unit or whatever, we believe that, that each unit should pay their fair share of the, of the costs of running the sewer department and, and treating the water to the very high level that the EPA makes us treat it to. We have a very good plant. It's one of the best in the state and the nation. The water that we put out into the river is, um, you could probably drink it if, uh, we did a little bit more filtration on it, but it's very, very clean. Um, we're proud of that and, um, but the EPA makes us hit that high level and, and so that's the, the standard that we have to follow. So that's kind of where we are on our second unit program and our fees and some of the, the, um, I, I know we interact, maybe not directly because applicants go to you guys, come to us, go bounce back and forth, but we try and keep it simple. If you have a kitchen and you have a, a unit that's really an independent facility, you know, we believe it should be defined as that capacity unit or that equivalent dwelling unit definition.
Questions for Mr. Palmer?
Yeah. Many times in, uh, out there, people will have a portable refrigerator, a little beverage refrigerator and a plug-in microwave. I've heard this many times too, that if you have those two items anywhere in your house, it's classified as a cooking area. Is that true?
No, it has to be a separate unit. I mean, if you have a house-
Within, within a separate unit.
Yeah.
Let's say, for instance, if you go in that separate unit and there's those two items-
Yes, it is.
-in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if you have a house and you have a kitchen and you have a bar area and it has a separate microwave and a fridge and, you know, in your, wherever, but that isn't a separate unit, meaning it can't be blocked off and walled off and, and set up as a separate structure with a bedroom, bathroom, kitchen structure, then, then it's not a second unit. Same thing, a lot of people have outdoor kitchens, you know, with a, with a barbecue, with a fridge, you know, outdoors. Well, but it's not attached to a bathroom and a bedroom, so it's not a separate second unit. If you do have a house that has a way of, of separating it off as a separate unit, uh, we've been in a couple of houses where there is kitchen, bedroom, bathroom, and then you walk down a hall and there's a door, the old hotel thing where you can bolt it from both sides and you can close the door and bolt it from both sides and then get into this other unit, this other side of the same unit another way. We would define that as a separate, independent capacity unit because you can, you can shut that door and make it two units, much like the house that we were in that's basically been turned into a duplex. Now, if someone says, well, I don't use it that way. I, I, it's my artist's studio and I, I go down there and do my work. What we would ask them to do is to move the fridge or the microwave out. We would come look at it and we would document that and move on. We're, we're not trying to find every little one. If we find them, we say, look, here's the rules. If you're not using it that way and you can modify what you're doing, then we're fine. Because our goal is to really find the independent structured dwelling unit kinds of, um, boxes that are being used that way and, and not try and regulate every little person who's got a artist's studio with a plug-in beverage fridge and a microwave. We, we don't have the ability in a regulatory way, nor the staff, as you guys don't have the staff, to go out there and look at every house all the time and figure out who's using which house which way and how it's being used and this month it's being used this way and then when nobody's looking, it's, you know, rent it out and use that way. We don't have the ability to do that. And so what we're looking for is clear structure spaces that, that can be independent facilities. And, and if people have a barn with a toilet and a, and a fridge, great, no problem. We don't regulate that. That's not that second unit.
Thanks for joining us. I feel like the, oftentimes it's, we, we talk about other agencies or interactions and so it's good to have somebody here. So I think my question is, is kind of on a broader scale, is how does the policy come about? Like, how do you, how does the sanitary district interact with the city? And, um, where do those, where do those agreements come in place? Like if the sanitary district says, okay, it's sixteen thousand four hundred and ninety-eight dollars for a connection fee. Who would this, is it like a take it or leave it situation or is there negotiation or is...
Well, we're, we're just like, you know, the, the city of Ojai is created by essentially state law. Um, we're created by state law. Uh, we're created under the sanitary district act of twenty-three, which is a, which is an act of the state legislature that allows for the creation of independent governmental agencies, just like you have fire districts and library districts and park and rec districts. You know, you can have a sewer district and, and the, the sanitary district here exists because there were four districts in the valley dating back to the twenties up through the sixties. And in nineteen eighty-five, rather than having four boards and four districts and, and, and four different groups, they merged and became the sanitary district. So we're an independent, um, governmental agency, just like the city. So we go through the same processes you all do when it comes to ordinances and fees and Prop two eighteen and Brown Act and, and everything. I mean, we're, we're essentially identical in, in many of the procedural things that we do that, that the city would do as well. So when we come up with, in order to come up with our fees, um, we have to make sure we have the appropriate accounting and engineering studies to justify those fees. And then we adopt those fees and any changes to those fees are subject to proposition two eighteen and Prop thirty-two, which are very similar to what a city would do, um, in, in raising, you know, fees and adjustments. Prop two eighteen is an interesting act because it came about because, um, um, cities were, some cities were charging people for water. And then some of those charges were then being shuffled off to another department to fund something else. And so if you didn't have enough money to fund libraries and your general fund, well, then you raised money on your water side and said, it costs this much for the city to administer the water department and so the water department would pay the city general fund for, uh, administrative and overhead. And so money was getting sloshed back and forth between, um, things that should be, you know, defined barriers. And so Prop two eighteen was passed and said, you can only charge for the cost of doing the service. That was a very simple thing, but when you read the, the detailed fine print, it meant you can't charge people different rates either. So we can't have, under proposition two eighteen, I can't have, you know, one rate for this house, a different rate for this house, a different rate for this house. Everybody gets the same rate. And in order to change that rate, I have to go through a very detailed public voting process to change that rate. And so it's very public, it's very out there, it's, it's, it's not behind closed doors where the board gets to vote and, you know, just, hey, we're going to raise rates and move money over here. Can't do that anymore for a very good reason. But it also restricts us to the fact that we can't give different rates to different people. So one of the questions I get is, why can't you give affordable housing a different rate than you give non-affordable housing? I can't do that. I can't say this house of four people pays X and this house of four people pays a different rate based solely on their income levels. And so now you can do that if you're a city and you use housing money to buy down the rate for the affordable housing. So you'll find some cities, uh, city of Camarillo, they have, um, they have voted on a way, but they use a different flavor of money to buy down the, the sewer rate for some of their low income or sort of their senior, uh, connection folks. I can't do that because I only have one flavor of money. I don't have general fund, gas tax, housing money, CDBG money. I don't have any of that. I only have sewer service charges. So I can't do that. Now Edison can do it because they're a private entity and they can get, they can get some relief under the public utilities commission to do some of those things. But a sanitary district like ours, we're very, very restricted under proposition two eighteen that I can't, based on any kind of individual social class, charge people different rates. And so we don't have that ability to charge different rates, even though there may be good social questions about, you know, should that be something that would be allowed? I, I can't do it anymore now that proposition two eighteen is passed. So proposition two eighteen did some good things in that it aligned money to stay in the fund that was, you know, a, a, a city has an enterprise fund and, and sewer has to stay in sewer and water has to stay in water and trash stays in trash and general fund is the, is the everything fund. Gas tax has to go into roads. You can't use gas tax money to, to, you know, mow the lawns and parks and all those kinds of things. So proposition two eighteen stopped some of that sloshing back and forth, but it also said, you can't have different rates for different people. And so although we may collectively, socially think there's some good things, we haven't found a way to do it. Now, if, if we could get some county money like CDBG money or, or, and buy down some of those rates, it may, may be legally possible. I'm not even sure if we could, but that's the restraint we have on some of those things. So there aren't, are, there aren't deals to be cut. And that's kind of one of the reasons that the board looked at some of these financing options, which are very, very unique. I've been around housing and development and arena numbers and SCAG and, and, and tax credit, you know, projects all over the county. I, I've never seen these where you get to pay on the tax bill free for five years or some other variation, you know, thereof. So that's one of the things the board did is say, okay, well then maybe there's a way to, you know, do something and that's what they came up with.
This is kind of a off the subject, not odd, no, it's on the subject, but it's kind of an odd question. It has to do with these tiny homes and these compostable toilets. Are you familiar with that?
Yes.
What, what is the sanitary district, uh, opinion of that type of, um, situation?
Well, I think, um, you know, stepping back away from the purely sanitary district's perspective, I think, you know, as an engineer and as a person, you know, gray water, composting toilets, there are lots of things out there that, um, represent different ways to solve, you know, waste solutions for, for society. I'm fine with them. But I don't regulate them. You know, really composting toilets and septic systems and seepage pits and all kinds of different things, those are really dictated by environmental health and the EPA. But one of the interesting things that I found after coming to the sanitary district and, and trying to figure out how some of this all started, the, the city had a sewer system that dates back to the twenties and the, the sewage plant was down below the, the tennis courts, the lower courts area. And it was primary only, very rudimentary. And, um, a couple of my employees who've been with us long times remember as kids that you didn't swim in San Antonio Creek because you'd get sick. That was the common thing, you know? You didn't go down to camp comfort and swim in the creek because you'd get sick. So in the nineteen sixties, post-war development was happening. In the nineteen, I think it was nineteen sixty-one, the county building official issued a subdivision moratorium for many areas of the county because there were problems with septics and there was problems with groundwater and surface water contamination and said, no more subdivisions until there's a sewer department that comes in place. That was the emphasis that pushed Oakview sanitary district to form, Miners Oaks sanitary district to form and Ventura Avenue sanitary district to form. Oakview built the plant where it is today and then the city, Miners Oaks and Ventura all sort of paid to have Oakview treat their sewage. So there was the old plant in the twenties, which was very rudimentary and primary only, to Oakviews that was pushed because of septic issues and ground contamination issues. So we're coming full circle today. We're talking about gray water, we're talking about septic systems, we're talking about composting toilets and environmental sustainable ways to do, um, you know, waste treatment from society, but we still run into the same problem of geology in the valley. It, it's just sort of a basic problem. You know, there's a reason that when it rains really hard, the water seeps out of the ground in many areas of town because it just perks up out of the ground. And, and then you have a septic system in that same ground trying to push water down into the ground. So whether it's a composting toilet or, or all these things, they're all interrelated and it's all coming full circle to, you know, back to the twenties when the city formed and these septic systems were, were put in place. So people ask us, what about gray water? Gray water takes water away from me, but that's okay. If, if that helps some of our water situations in the valley, then you know what? That's something that we'll live with. I, I will say, and I, and I try and say this everywhere I go, and people are doing a wonderful job saving water right now. The state came down and said, cut water use thirty, thirty-five percent. And the water districts are showing that kind of reduction in the water. We're only seeing about six percent reduction at the treatment plant. So if people are saving thirty-five percent and we're only seeing a six percent reduction, that means the majority of water in my mind that is being saved is in the outside environment. And I think if we think about all of the water that's used in the valley for every source, from every use, pumped, lake, this, that, majority of it's used outside the house. Most of the houses and Steve knows the, the standards and, you know, they've, the, the fixtures are very efficient, people are pretty efficient, and we're only seeing a six percent reduction because of, there's not much more you can cut in the house until you just stop using water. So, you know, there, there's a lot that goes into some of the policies and, and what we do and why we do it and how we're regulated and, 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 and projects bounce back and forth between Kathleen's office and mine. And, and I hope we get it right. We try and tell people and be consistent in what we're telling people. There are some people that are trying to figure out, is there a crack in, in your system and somewhere between Kathleen and me that they can squeeze through and get a unit and, okay, I guess if you want to, you can play that game, but eventually, you know, I'm going to find it and, and we're going to regulate it based on a consistent approach about this kitchen issue.
You know, Jeff, I see your sanitary trucks through town and whatnot and I'm curious to know, what, what is the general state of the city's sewer lines? Uh, I, I'm, I assume there's ongoing repairs required, that sort of thing, but in a general sense, can you address that and...
We have, um, we have a very rural system. Um, you know, in sanitary district terms, we have a hundred and twenty miles of pipeline. We maintain the main lines and everything from the main line to the house, whatever that is, house, condo, apartment, whatever, is the private lateral. So of the main lines down the center of the street, we have a hundred and twenty miles of pipeline. And if you divide out the number of connections we have to the, the hundred and twenty miles, we have about sixty-seven connections per mile. Most agencies, if you go to Ventura or Carpinteria, Santa Barbara, local agencies will be up near a hundred connections per mile. So for the same mileage, they'll have more connections, they'll more have more revenue coming in. So of our hundred and twenty miles, some of it dates back to the twenties. Some of it was put in the twenties, much of it was put in, um, in the sixties and shortly thereafter when these two districts, uh, formed. We do have some that's eighties and nineties, but, but, um, there's a lot of old stuff. So we do a couple of things. You'll see our trucks running around town, um, cleaning the lines. The old pipe that was put in was put in in five-foot sections and everywhere there's a joint today, um, likely. Um, those joints have moved over the fifty, sixty, eighty years and there's roots coming in from trees. And so the little finger, uh, feather roots start in and they get bigger and bigger and bigger. And, and so our equipment goes in and has a spinning nozzle and, and cuts all those roots off. Sooner or later, those roots get to the size of my thumb or my wrist and completely will break, uh, from the inside out, the pipe. Uh, many laterals we see in town, uh, have that problem. The roots have just been coming in for sixty years. I got one on our back patio that somebody pulled out that was, you know, a four-inch line was completely- was completely clogged with roots. I mean, you couldn't even pour water through it. It was so tight and sealed. What you see us out doing on the east end of town is because of every joint being loose, we're actually coming in with a soft flexible liner like a, it's felt and it's soaked in a, a temperature activated epoxy. They insert it inside out in the sewer line. They heat up the water. It cures. And it's about less than a quarter of an inch thick and it hardens up as hard as concrete. And so we're putting these new sleeves or liners in all of the old pipes to give them another hundred years' worth of life, but to seal out all those joints and all those roots. It also seals out all the water that comes into our lines when the groundwater comes up. We're going into a wet winter right now. The groundwater's down. When the groundwater starts to come up, we will start taking huge amounts of extra water. We do about a million and a half gallons a day in normal sewage flow. In the rains, we've hit peaks of nine million gallons a day, multiplied by a factor of six, just seeping in everywhere. That's a major problem for our system, for the hydraulics, for the treatment. And so one of the lining issues is to go through, seal all these cracks, get rid of all these roots and get rid of all of this infiltration. So our eighty to sixty to eighty-year-old system, we're now slowly going to go through and re-line and replace and rehab that to give it another fifty to a hundred years' worth of life. But, you know, we're a small community. We can't do it all at once. It's going to take us a better part of a decade or so to, to complete that work. So we're out cleaning and videoing our lines. And then you've just seen kind of our guys out hired a contractor out of Huntington Beach. They just lined twenty-one thousand feet of pipe. We're going to have to do that every year for, you know, the better part of a decade to, to rehab the system and, and give new life to this old community.
Can I jump?
Roseanne hasn't had a casted question yet.
The, the whole lining thing, so how, can you say a little bit about your new ordinance?
Okay.
And then how does that relate to the fact that you are lining these pipes? Are those pipes somehow not going to be subject to point-of-sale inspections or when people remodel and things like that? And can you also speak to, if you are, say, somebody does decide to build a second unit, does that automatically trigger a lateral inspection of the main house?
Okay. So a little more history. In nineteen ninety-nine, some environmental groups sued the EPA because they felt the EPA was not enforcing water quality regulations. And there was a settlement out of that case between environmental groups and the EPA to, to force regulations to be improved. And one of those was in twenty thirteen, they adopted a rule about the discharge about nutrients, nitrogen and phosphorus into the rivers. And they essentially cut the amount of nitrogen and phosphorus that we could discharge in half. Now they've done the same thing to horses. They're under some regulations about how they maintain their horse pastures. The septic people are going to get regulated by the EPA coming, starting in January. They're going to do some studies. So everybody that's a part of the, the nutrient pie, I say it's fertilizer, but it's everything, is going to have to cut back. So when we looked at where the nutrients are coming from, they're coming from our leaky main lines. They're also coming from leaky laterals. And so we're lining our laterals and we adopted an ordinance that says, the private lateral from the house out to the main line, under certain conditions, needs to be completed a video inspection and any deficiencies that are noted need to be fixed. Because if the water's leaking into my main lines, it's also leaking into the laterals. So we adopted the ordinance. It goes into effect, it starts in effect this December first. Any house, and one of the triggers is a point of sale. Any house that goes into escrow after December first has to have a video inspection of their lateral. Take a camera, put it down the cleanout, go to the street, look, get a video DVD, bring it to us. We'll look at it. We've already started to see them. Some houses that weren't in escrow, but they wanted to do it anyway, have started. And then we look at them. If they're fine and there's no defects whatsoever, we'll issue a ten-year compliance certificate that says, this house doesn't have to get a new video inspection for ten years. Sell the house every year for ten years. Still, you got a ten-year window. At the end of ten years, you do another video if you go to sale. And if it's still fine, it's going to be fine. The thing about sewer pipes is, if it's fine, generally it stays fine. If you've got roots, they're not going to go away by themselves. They're going to keep coming back. And in fact, during dry times, the roots are worse. They go looking for the water much faster. So we have a point-of-sale, private sewer lateral ordinance that says, you get a video, you get it fixed. There's a variety of ways you can fix it. There's little, we've used them on our system. They're available on laterals. They're little stints. You go in with a little robot. It goes in and does a two-foot-long patch, just like a stint in your artery and, and seals up that joint if you've got one joint that's got roots in it. Again, if we do the video and that patch has been installed, we'll give that line a five-year certificate because they only did the patch. We'll go look at it in five years. If it's still fine, it'll be fine. Most of the patches and repairs, if they're done right, they're going to last for years. This is not something that sewers just sort of magically fall apart all by themselves. So we started the, that inspection program. One of the other trigger points, two other trigger points is one, if you do a major modification to your house, an existing house, and the permit valuation is over twenty-five thousand dollars, then that would trigger a video inspection of the lateral. If you build a second unit, that would trigger an inspection of the lateral. Now we're looking from the house out to the street. So your question about will a second unit, a new second unit, require a, a video inspection? The answer is yes.
And what about the lining? If it's lined, are they still subject to the?
If, if the whole thing is lined, it gets a ten-year certificate. If you dig it all up and, and replace it, if you pipe burst it where they send a, sort of like a rocket head through that, that sort of expands out the old pipe and pulls a new pipe through it. If you do the whole thing, you get ten years. If you only do a patch, you get five years. But if you only have one problem and you do a good patch, it's probably going to be okay. I mean.
But I mean, if you guys lined it, if you guys lined it?
No, we don't, we don't have the equipment to line laterals because they're smaller. They're four inches in size.
But what did you guys just do up in the Grand View track?
We just lined the main lines.
Oh, just the main lines?
Main lines. Now, one of the things, and, and it's sort of a nuance. One of the problems that we've seen on our system is when the, and this is primarily in the old city area, when they built the old tracks, they built the main line first, then they built the houses. And when they built the house, then they trench the sewer out to the main line. And wherever the main line was, they took a hammer and they kind of knocked a hole in the main line and stuck the lateral up to it, poured some concrete around it. Now, sixty, seventy years later, it's cracked, it's dried, the roots have gotten into there. Some laterals, the lateral is fine. It's that joint right at the main line that's the problem. And, and so what we've committed to doing as we work our way across town, there's a system that's called a top hat. It looks just like a top hat. It's got a rim and then it's got, you know, the, the top of the hat. And if you can insert that from the main line up the lateral so that the, the brim of the hat seals against the main line and you have two feet of top hat, that would seal that, that butt joint that, that, you know, has cracked. As we go through our system and we see lateral, what we call the Y, the joint, that needs a top hat, we're going to develop each year a list and we'll go do the top hats. For the private, for a private person to put in a top hat and have a plumber do it is extraordinarily expensive because of the robots that are needed to do it. But if we do a thousand of them in a job, we get a much better price. So if you need a top hat and that's the only thing that's wrong with the lateral, we'll figure out a way to do it because it's just impossible for the average person to call up a company and say, hey, I need a top hat. It's just, there are very few companies that do it. It's very specialized and so we'll do it in bulk numbers.
So on that top hat, is the homeowner paying for the top hat and you're doing the installation?
No, we'll, we'll pay for it.
You'll do the whole thing? Okay. Then I had another question. So tonight, you know, we're talking about the possibility of adding housing stock.
Right.
Affordable housing. And so my question is about the capacity of your system.
We have plenty of capacity.
Okay. So there's not a limit on, I mean, not that we're going over the top, but you have plenty of capacity.
Go as crazy as you want.
It's curious.
Politically, is whatever you think you can handle, we can handle it.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and the reason is, is so, and I'm not advocating growth. When the system was originally envisioned, we were in the post-war era and there was, you know, subdivisions being built in Placentia and areas all over the Southland, the, the valley like crazy. And people assumed that that same thing was going to happen here. And, and this community, this whole valley decided, no, we don't want to be like that. Well, the plant had already been decided and built. The pipes are already there. Where our plant today is running at about forty-five percent capacity. So go as crazy as you want. Don't worry about sewers. Worry about old sewers because there's problems. Don't worry about capacity.
So, okay, so you said you can't, you can't change fees based on affordability, but, so for example, a twelve-bedroom house on Buckborne Lane has a greater potential to use more capacity than a two-bedroom house on Shady Lane. But would they still pay the same connection fee?
Yes.
So is there a way to adjust connection fee based on square footage?
Very good question. And, and we get this question a lot as well. Many agencies in-house do sewer and water. City of Ventura, they're providing the water. They're providing the sewer. They're providing regulations and land development and zoning. They got the whole thing inside their house. They know how much water each house uses because they've got it in their system. I don't know that. I can't get that information. Across our district, there are sixteen different water districts and little mutuals. And the California Supreme Court has decided that each individual person's utility usage, water usage is private. So I can't even go to Casitas or Miners Oaks or Ventura or Golden State and say, how much water did everybody use? And I'm going to charge based on the water usage because I can't get that information. It's private. So we have had to come up with a billing unit. And, and, and so it does have the potential for maybe not being matched exactly to the size of the unit. I get this from Mobile Home Parks and Grandma and an old house. And I don't have the ability to, to, to mathematically calculate a different number. A lot of times, many of some of the larger houses actually give us less sewage because there's few people that live there and they're not, people aren't there all the time. And so any kind of accommodation for flow-based calculations does also have the situation where there's people that aren't even there. And, and how do, we would have to take that into consideration. And we don't have the ability to in any way measure that. You can't put a meter on sewage flow. Coffee grinds, egg shells, banana peels, everything. Water meters need to be very, very clean flow and, and there isn't a way to meter sort of the, you know, what comes out of each individual person's pipe.
Just as, as a follow-up, I mean, I mean, would the ability, so just throwing out ideas. So a property already has this sixteen thousand dollar connection fee. Is there an ability to, for the sanitary district saying, okay, since they've already paid one and this guest house is going to be smaller, I mean, wouldn't that kind of be like, you know, bundling per se?
Under Proposition 218, we, we can't, we don't have the ability to, based on some non-engineering zoning criteria, come up with a different rate. Because for every person who says, smaller house has smaller use, there's a bunch of people who will come and scream in my ear that lots of smaller houses have more use because more people are packed into them. And, and for every person that says one way, I get somebody over here saying, well, wait a minute. My neighbor has twelve people living in a house that's got one bathroom. Shouldn't they pay more than me because their twelve people are in one bathroom and I've got three bathrooms, but it's, you know, me and grandma? And so this is a struggle when, when you have such a variety of housing stock, of age of housing stock and a very, very diverse population, both age and economic abilities. And, and the, probably the most perfect way would be water, water usage-based. And that's the one thing I can't get because of privacy rules. Thanks.
Excuse me. So if somebody put in, you know, they've got an existing home, they've got the existing connection and they're going to add the second unit, when they put the, and they're going to go put in the sanitary line, is that sanitary line installed and connected to the lateral? Or does it actually go out and get connected to the main line? So now there's two potentially laterals to that one property?
I will allow a lateral to be connected to the front house if the lot can't be subdivided. Meaning, I don't want to have two houses on one lateral that could be subdivided and two future owners arguing over who caused the backup. And we have plenty of those just because of the way and the type of, of housing as it was developed. And we get into these two property owners yelling at each other, you blocked my toilet. So if there is a house on a lot and it's subdividable by whatever zoning regulations are out there, county or city, we'll require them to put in their own lateral all the way out to the main purely on the basis that someday somebody could sell off that second unit and, and then we're in the owners arguing. So if it's primarily, you know, in the city area, I don't know if there are that many lots that would meet that criteria of, of lots that could be subdivided. There's probably a few, but most of them probably not. So I would say, connect it up to the house in a, in a proper way with cleanout so you can make sure that you can get plumbing equipment in and, and clean if there is a plug. But it can go, you don't have to dig out in the street just to have a second pipe.
What's the cost per foot of installation, like cost per line of foot?
It varies. Well, street work's expensive. And we will try and do everything we can to avoid street work because of traffic control and plates and paving and disruption of traffic. It, it just, the price goes through the roof. To do lining projects that, where there's a cleanout and I would say easy access is probably in the thirty to fifty dollars a foot range. If it's really difficult and they got to dig it up and you're under sidewalks and things, it's probably in the hundred and fifty dollars a foot range. One of the things that's happening with our private sewer lateral program is the plumbers are seeing that there's an opportunity to sell their services. And I have no problem with plumbers probably providing a good quality product and a service and making a living doing it. But there are a number of plumbers that are around, both in town and out of town, who are not being fair to people. So I would tell everybody, if you have to have some plumbing work done, call and get three bids. If you have any questions about what a plumber is recommending you do in terms of a fix and you want an independent review, we will look at that for you. Up to and including if we have to send our camera equipment out occasionally to check something that's odd, we will do that. I want to make sure that our customers and the citizens that all live and work and are neighbors are, are getting an absolutely fair price. We had a ninety-three-year-old lady call about a week and a half ago and got charged thirteen hundred dollars to have her plumbing line snaked through her toilet, just the, the normal line cleaning done. And, and she was in tears. And so we called another plumber for her to get a second recommendation. And another local plumber said she didn't need that much work and went to the other plumber that charged her the thirteen hundred dollars and I guess they had a conversation in the parking lot and the guy came back and wrote the old lady a check. So be careful. Go to reputable people. Get three bids. Call us if you need our assistance. We're happy to help. We're happy to help you and the city here. Look at our information and help make, if we can help you guys make decisions that, that you need to make, we're happy to, to help you understand what we do and how we do it. And if it helps in any way, we're available.
Is your number just for replacing? You were talking about replacing, but what about new? Like if you, you're building a second unit and you're trenching and everything?
Again, plan for where you're putting the second unit. I mean, if you've got a saw cut driveways and it's, and it's hard digging around trees and sidewalks and things, it gets expensive really quick. If you get a clear, straight shot through decent dirt, it's, it's a whole lot different. Those prices are the kind of the top and the bottom of that range. Those prices are the, kind of the top and the bottom of that range. You know, again, the, the lot's going to dictate what you can and cannot do, but try and think about the plumbing alignment, you know, early in the design process to, to, you know, make it as least obnoxious as possible.
Well, thank you.
I have a question, can I ask a more? Okay, so just following up on all the, the questions I hear from people that ask me all the time, and following up on what Mac had to say about, you know, different rates for different sized units, et cetera. So you don't have a different rate structure for apartments and duplexes than you do single family?
No. All, all residential units are charged the same, that same dwelling unit capacity. On the commercial side, we count fixture units. So, we go into a, a restaurant, and you count the number of sinks and toilets and floor sinks and things, and you count them up, and you divide by twenty-five, and every twenty-five capacity, or fixture units, is one capacity unit. So the Ojai Valley Inn, every room is counted, every sink is counted, I'm not going to say how many there are, but they're well over a hundred capacity units. Pepsi is orders of magnitude more than that because of how many they have and how much water they have. So it's the, a, a residential unit is an apartment, a condo, a house, a mobile home, everything's the same. On the commercial side, it's fixture units, and it varies based on, you know, how many fixture units the restaurant, restaurant are, you know, you go from a, we've had a situation where something was a dress shop, and then it went to a, you know, a small restaurant, and, and the jump in fixture units from the triple sinks and everything environmental health makes them do, jumped them up, you know, into a different category.
I just want to make sure everybody, because I get asked that question all the time about the rates, thanks.
We're good?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Have fun the rest of your night.
Good information. Appreciate that. Well, I guess we can ensue a little bit of discussion here on, on our second unit ordinance, or, one thing I, I thought that might be a good place to start is identifying why we're doing this in the first place, what are we trying to accomplish? Is it affordable units for our housing element? What other factors might play into that? And I would just want to get some clarification out on the table about, you know, from, from, what are, your opinions might be in terms of pursuing revised second ordinance, second unit ordinance, so. Would anyone like to chime in on the conversation?
Comment. You know, after poring through the information, actually, I sort of had an interesting process. When I started, you know, going through the packet, I first, just on my own, kind of looked at how I would answer the questions, the issues, without going into the other information, and then I went into that, and I saw that, oh, good, some of the documents supported where, where I was coming from, so it kind of validated that, that I was on the right track. But back to this part about, you know, what's our overall goal here? You know, after reading through some of the, the diagrams and the charts, you know, it appears that when you look at the, the income scale, and some of the projections, and you start looking at, you know, from moderate down to the extremely low income, if you provided any housing within that range, you're really targeting a good percent of the population, and meeting some of the target items, I mean, that was just kind of my observation.
What was that range again, low to?
Well, if you looked on, from moderate down to extremely low, and then, you know, I, I just, I don't have all the, I didn't add up all the numbers, but I just kind of overall generally looked at it, I felt like you'd be actually targeting a fair amount of the, the housing needs by doing that. So in other words, I guess, you know, going back to the question, you know, what's our overall goal here, do we itemize out and say we're going to target, you know, very low and extremely low, or do we go to a higher range? I personally think having a broader range of affordable housing is a good idea, because we have, we have single people, we also have families that need larger spaces, and I think that would meet, help meet the needs.
All right.
I think we're going to get really confused if we start trying to solve the housing problem with the second unit ordinance, because I don't think they have anything to do with each other. Second unit ordinance is really just, how do you build a second unit on a lot? I don't, I don't think we need to really address anything about, is it going to be affordable, or anything like that, because that's, that's something that the housing element really needs to look at, and the, you know, we go through that process every five years and update that.
Thanks, I think you said it better than I did, because generally I was kind of going in that direction, that it's really, we're increasing the housing stock, but by doing so, I think, depending on which direction we go, we, we may end up providing a portion of affordable housing.
Well, I was just going to say, you know, in terms of affordability, the general rule would be square footage, and that kind of, that certainly has an impact in our discussion as to how large we're, we're looking at, or small, for that matter, we're, in terms of, we're thinking, and, so it's just, it's just a factor, it's just another factor to consider. Rosalie?
Okay, well, that's an interesting point, John, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, but I think also what, what Sheriff Foster is saying is, is true, that it, it very much is related, you know, whether or not somebody can afford a rental is directly related to the size of the property. So, I mean, the housing element, to me, is really clear, that it is suggesting that we need to find ways to accommodate people up to, really only about, I mean, seventy K and lower, that that's really where forty-five percent, it looks to me like forty-five percent of the people who are renting properties need to find properties under two thousand dollars per month. And, so that's one thing. And, the rentals in this town have gone through the roof because of the limited inventory, because of the vacation rentals. I talked to one of my property managers before I came, and I just asked her, you know, to kind of give me her view on how she has seen the market change, and she said, really, at this point, the average price for a one-bedroom is eight to thirteen hundred, a two-bedroom is between thirteen hundred and two thousand. So right there, I mean, you have a problem. And, that three bedrooms at the lowest are at twenty-two hundred, and they go up a lot from there. And she directly ties it to the vacation rental problem. And, so, I mean, to me, the second units are tied to what the housing element is requiring us to do, which is to provide more affordable housing. And, and yet, you know, the, this cap, we have probably seven hundred different lots that could accommodate another second unit, up to six hundred and forty square feet, and that, that would solve a lot of problems right there, if people actually, if it were economically feasible for them to do that, but, I'm sort of rambling here, but, to me, the housing element does, is pushing us in this direction. I mean, certainly to make it a priority, if, if this is something that is really a priority for the city, and kind of this, got to do this right now, well, aren't, aren't we doing it right now because people are saying there's not enough affordable housing? I mean, isn't that how this got to be a priority? Maybe Mayor Lara can answer that for us, but, it's like, okay, we're going to do this right now, but isn't that why we're doing it? That's what I thought. So, I don't know, maybe, maybe this isn't the mechanism to do it. I definitely think the vacation rental thing should be resolved before we do anything, because, near as I can tell, you know, it doesn't matter what we do, if you build it smaller, if you build it bigger, you know, it, all of, whatever we build is going to go with the market, and the market right now is absolutely pushed by the lack of inventory. Building more units isn't going to solve that problem as quickly as just getting the existing units back online. Why build more units to solve a problem of affordability, or inventory, I mean, which has all these other potential impacts on the community when we have these properties that could come back online, and really, I mean, the property managers think that if this problem gets resolved, we will see affordability get back in line. So, I, I, I think this whole process is putting the cart before the horse. I think we really have to make sure the vacation rental thing is clarified, and we know how we're going to enforce it. I mean, I'm going to say more later, but, leave it at that for now.
I agree with Rosalie completely. Excellent points, I mean, although I think this, that we very much should be doing this, I think that we run the risk of just creating seven hundred or eight hundred more vacation rentals in Ojai. You know, I mean, that's, if we're doing this before city council, you know, clearly concludes the vacation rental issue, I don't feel I have enough information to move forward in this process. I think we should consider tabling the issue.
Yeah, okay. I'm not sure tabling the issue, first of all, they, they're definitely interrelated, vacation rentals and a second dwelling. In the housing element and the housing action plan, I think what the attempt there is to do is to look for areas which are limited in the city of Ojai for affordable housing. Second dwellings is a perfect fit for Ojai, in so many ways, to add more inventory, and may not, it may not, well, it'll be affordable to the degree that the inventory is increased. So, with that said, some of the, we can proceed with the idea that we can remove the impediments, that's, that's the goal here, that cause it to be more difficult for someone to develop or build a second dwelling, with the idea simultaneously that the city council is dealing with that issue. And I know that's on the agenda for Monday, and that they're going to have an update on their workshop, and they're moving, Mayor Lara will address that, I'm sure, when he talks to us, but, that seems to be moving forward with great speed. This, as we know, what did it take, two years to do the compliance program? How long did that take?
The housing element?
No, the, the compliance, the second unit compliance. So, there's, there's a lot to be done here. So, to me, there's plenty to talk about. And, I think we should proceed on going into specifics on how we can remove the impediments to at least put us in a position, because we're not writing the ordinance at this time, we're outlining a way to do that. And obviously, we need to deal with the second, the vacation rental issue.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
It's, it's interesting that how tightly connected the vacation rental issue is with this, and I think the vacation rental people are probably looking to see what we're doing, and we, we would like to have information, an exchange of information, and, and to identify the crossover areas, whatever they may be, that has an impact on, on how those ordinance might, may be crafted. It's a complicated and complex issue. I, I believe that, Phil rather, that we could, we should discuss some of the, the more of the technical issues, in terms of size, setbacks, that sort of thing, just to get an idea as we move forward, is this something that we really want to do? Because I think in that course of that conversation, we may uncover, or bring, reveal just a little more direction for us to follow.
So on that point, just to, you know, reading through all this, right, and if, just a bit of historical context, is when you look at, at that city council meeting back in two thousand and three, where they talked about how, how it all came down, it was like, you know, we had a city attorney at that time who, who recommended that they get scaled up, and that the, that the second units get scaled up in size relative to lot size, and then you see the, the planning commission scales, scales it back, but still sticks with increasing the size of the vacation rentals relative to lot size, and then they have public input, and it all went back to keeping it the way that it was. So, I think we can certainly discuss this a lot, but, you know, I think we got to keep in the back of our minds that whatever we think makes sense, it, other people have thought it made sense before, and then the community says no. So, I don't, I just don't want to go too far down the road before we, we're really getting public input.
I want to mention something, though, there is some differences, some major differences between two thousand and three and two thousand and fifteen. Two thousand and fifteen, we find ourselves in a different climate. We're, we're in a climate where, let's see, the, the new urbanization is, you know, the new thing to do, for people to live closer together, to, to people to be more, for density purposes, it's more sustainable, it's, it's the walkability, all those issues come into play, this is the climate we're in now. We're also really seeing the effect of lack of housing now, that they, they may have not, who knows, two thousand and three, I think John was there, I saw your name. It's like, you're like Cher, you know, you go away.
It was only twelve years ago.
So where was I going with this? So, there was a movement, you know, there was the AB eighteen sixty-six that came out and set certain guidelines. Then there was the, city council members and the planning commission that determined that they wanted to make stricter rules based on that. So they came up with the ordinance that, that was passed in two thousand and three, which has much more restrictive units than what's recommended in AB eighteen sixty-six. So, the question is, is if we're going to reduce impediments, again, that being our goal, not our goal personally, but the goal of the city, and again, I'd like to remind everybody that this housing action plan and the housing element is fairly new, isn't it? When, when did, when was the date of that? Wasn't that?
The housing element is from twenty fourteen to twenty twelve, twenty, twenty-one.
Yeah, so, that's our current direction that we've been given, based on the current state of, of where we are at this time. So to go back to two thousand and three and just say, well, they did this, so it, it, it was good, it's different now. I, I think we have to really see the condition we're in, in the city of Ojai right now, and the lack of housing, and what are our options? There aren't that many options here, and we're in a small area to, to deal with this affordable housing situation. I think, I really do believe that the second dwelling units are really one of our best options. I also personally believe that there are other options besides section eight-type housing, which I still believe has its place. Maybe it's a tiny home community. I know people working on it, I know Vena's working on that, there's some real viability there, in looking at those types of issues. But, really what we have to work with, I believe this is, this is what we have at our immediate disposal, and, again, it's a directive that our city has given, it, it has given us, and our job, I believe, is to remove the impediments to allowing that to come to pass. So that's really where our focus should be, that's my opinion.
Yeah, please.
So, so I'm just saying that, I, I, I hear what you're saying, I'm not saying that I think, I think two thousand and three is only relevant in that the city, I mean, the citizenry, and maybe, John, you can illuminate it, but I think the citizenry opposed things getting bigger. And, from what I see of the citizenry, I don't think that people, I don't hear the average person in Ojai saying, I want it to become more dense, you know? I hear them, I do hear them say they want to walk, that everybody wants to walk to town, but they also want to live in a big, open space, you know, they want to, you know, it's, that's the tough part, you know, they, everybody wants it to be private, everybody wants, they want their own little piece of that little country pie. And so I'm just saying, I'm not saying we shouldn't proceed, I'm not saying it's not a good idea, but I'm just saying, I, I'm- not saying it's not a good idea, but I'm just saying, I can imagine this group of people, this community saying, we don't want it to be, you know, we want to be very careful about how, if we're making things bigger, building it up, building out the land more, et cetera. You know, I just don't want us to just do a whole ton of work and then everybody go, forget about it. I'm only saying we should get public input sooner than later. That's all I'm saying.
I think that public input will come, for sure, once we've outlined our plan. I mean, there'll be plenty of opportunity for them to come, but most of the public input that I've been part of, since I've been on the Planning Commission, has been a move toward affordable housing. I haven't seen the anti-development crowd, I'm sure they'll show up, but I haven't seen that. I've seen mostly a strong coalition in the direction of
No, totally, I agree. But I think that means we have to stay smaller. That's what I started by saying, was that the idea of making the properties bigger is all I'm saying. That, the bigger the property gets, the less affordable it becomes, as long as we have so many properties that are offline in terms of, you know, families renting houses. So, the bigger it gets, the more expensive it gets.
Okay. So, what you're saying is, why change the 640-square-foot rule? Is that the basis of your argument?
Well, yeah, I mean, well, I'm not, I'm just saying that the bigger it gets, the less affordable it gets as a rental, and that the community traditionally, if they're looking for affordable housing, they need to be, it needs to be small, because the bigger it gets, the higher the price it goes, because we have, you know, we can't, not enough people can spend the money to build, you know, enough second units to cure the lack of inventory. They're too expensive to build. Very few people are going to build a second unit, right?
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay, so, you're not going to cure an inventory problem that way. Therefore, the bigger the unit, the more expensive it's going to be to rent.
Matt, go ahead. First of all, though, these are public meetings. I mean, the laws are made by people who show up, you know, I mean, I could go on with that about how many people vote in an election and whatever, but, so, I do feel that, you know, the public has the right, the ability and the duty to be involved now in the process. Second thing, you know, market economics would state, the greater the supply, it may have the adverse effect of bringing down the price. But, again, this goes back to my original thing, this is that, it also might have the adverse effect of just increasing the vacation rental stock, because people might be driven to build these units as vacation rentals. But, say that that, we've put that aside. If all of a sudden, next week, 500 more three-bedroom houses came online in Ojai, prices would be less, I believe. They would probably be, you know, so, I think there's a lot of facets to this.
I was going to mention that, you know, just reading through the documents, you know, it's hard to say, once we get, you know, if we decide what this is going to be, how many people are going to actually build. And the cost is definitely going to be a factor as to who does it or not. But then, as, you know, and Chester was mentioning, there are things that we can put into place that are going to kind of help regulate, because I completely agree about the vacation rental topic we've been discussing. You know, potentially, it could go into that, but we do know the city council's working on it, and I think there are some things that we could put in place that would help regulate that, too, in the event that this went into effect before the vacation rental.
I just want to mention something, just on that, so I don't forget. That's why it's important for us to work on it right now simultaneously, because as we're, you know, bringing out this problem, we're sending it to them to deal with in the vacation rental. So, if we just be quiet, and they go through a process.
Right. Yeah, and basically, I mean, some of the information that we might provide will help them.
Exactly.
Because, as you mentioned, Steve, you know, it goes hand in hand. So, I do think it's worth going through now, and that we take a stab at it and get going on it.
Mayor LaRra, what was it?
There's public comment.
Well, this is an open discussion, so please feel free to come forward. We'll make that available to you.
I'm getting ready.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Vena, as you know. I tend to look at other places, other cities, to solve some of the issues that I see at home. And a couple of places that I see are doing very progressive things. One place is Portland, Oregon, and various cities in Oregon. They are establishing what we call the second dwelling units, they call the accessory dwelling units. And they're actually having the square footages a lot less than what we have in our 640-square-foot limitation. They're going down to, in some cases, 300, 400 square feet, and they're making it at least one bedroom, maybe even two-bedroom units, incredibly spacious, very efficient, really smart design. And I think in terms of the cost for affordability to build these units, that would make it a lot more accessible for a lot of people here. As you know, square footage is directly related to the cost. So, if we're able to do that, I think that would make it easier for people to actually build, as well as the setbacks that are required on the rear and on the side, that'll make it a lot more easy to build within the setbacks. And what I see is, everyone is trying to maximize the square footage of 640, when, if they're just more educated as to what you could actually do with square footage, and actually see how big a small space could feel like, I think that will really help change people's ideas of what, you know, square footage really means. Another idea that I had was looking at the city of Santa Cruz. They've established a process of permitting second dwelling units where it's almost over the counter. Typical, like in garage buildings, you can get a set of plans pretty much designed with structural engineering and details completed, so that it's a lot more efficient, it's expedited, and you can reduce the fees regarding the permit process. So, we can have an open call to various architects, various engineers, to submit plans that are readily available at the city. So, it's a lot easier to permit and a lot more efficient. So, those are my two comments.
Thank you.
Great ideas.
Yeah.
Can I just add some, because I've been hearing, listening to the conversation, I think that there's a little bit off-topic with this affordable housing, you know? I mean, provided all the details, I'm hesitant to try to put you back on track, but, you know, affordable housing truly is affordable with quotes. I mean, it really is a defined entity that is indentured for people, and there's an income calculation to put those people in there. To equate whatever we're going to be doing with the second unit to be affordable housing to what is provided in the housing element, is really completely apples and oranges. So, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that. That's why I put the question before you tonight. Affordable is an actual, I mean, when you read the housing element and you go through it, it really talks about incomes and indenturing those things. You put deed restrictions on them, you make them very much affordable just for those people. That's how it works, okay? Affordable, this other creature where you keep on saying more affordable or affordable by design, is what Vena's talking about, directly equates to square footage. Affordable design means you have something small, and it's not like what Jeff was describing with the granite and the stainless steel and things like that, it's affordable by the way it's designed. So, I think the question really before you tonight was, you know, I don't know how you get to the affordable, and that's one of the things the city manager and I talked about, was, you know, not being kind of bound by the fact that you're trying to get these affordable, because they, as Vena pointed out, they are by right. I mean, the state of California stepped in and said, so we can't say, hey, we're going to allow you to build a second unit, but we want you to put a deed restriction, say you're only going to rent it to this person at this income. So, I think all the things that you've talked about that drive the prices up and everything are all good, but I think you need to kind of divorce yourself from that idea of affordable and meeting these things, if you're truly not going to do that, because it's really misleading to the public. The public is, people that are really extremely low, very low, low, are desperately trying to find units here. You talk to somebody from any of the people over Self Help or Ojai, Help of Ojai, they're going to tell you how many people come to them and want help, you know, and are desperate to find units. So, I just think the idea is, you know, if you're going to just make more units and just be straightforward about it, you're going to make more units, and, you know, because I don't see how you're going to be able, given what I've heard tonight, how you're going to be able to limit them to affordable by design if you're going to let them get bigger. I mean, everything in construction is done by square footage, just like he told us, the price per linear foot. So, I'm just saying, let's just, I think the overall goal needs to be defined, because I can't do work for you and help guide you through this if we're still thinking that somehow or other, we're making these affordable, but we're going to make them bigger. That's all. I just think it just needs to be kind of straightforward.
Creating an impediment of sorts by trying to bring in the affordability issue into something that is by rights independent of that, of costs.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, I just think that, you know, there was a lot of talk about affordability. I put affordability in there, and clearly you can see that, you know, as Vena said, keeping them small and even smaller is where people are going, and that creates affordable by design, meaning they're small, they're designed to be small, the rents are going to be affordable, provided they're not vacation rentals, okay? And that's the way we're doing it now in California, because there's not a lot of affordable projects being pursued because of, as all the things people self-help talked about, all the reasons, you know, the lack of funding and et cetera, et cetera, where you actually deed restrict. In the housing element, I think at some point it talked to you about the city developing an annuity fee, you know, where everybody who builds pays an annuity fee to have affordable housing money. But in the city of Ojai, we have no pot of money, we don't have that in like-kind. We have some property sites, I think there's 10 of them listed in the housing element. And that's the first thing, I get calls, I've got a call just recently from somebody who wanted to do an affordable housing project, and he wanted to know, what can the city offer me? Because the way you are competitive with tax credits for affordable housing projects is in like-kind. We don't have the in-like-kind, so we're very frustrated here. So, I just want to make very clear, because that was the whole point of having you guys actually flesh out tonight, you know, are we just looking about making, removing impediments, provide additional housing opportunities? And, you know, I don't know if they go bigger unless, you know, how you restrict them to keep them low. I have no idea. I would have to do an extensive amount of research and maybe look into some of these other cities and what they're doing, how you would keep something that's getting up to the size of a full-blown three-bedroom, two-bath house and keep it affordable. I don't know how you do that.
And I think, though, the issue is bigger than affordability, you know? There are, we talk about just firefighters, service people, maybe the young family, maybe they need a thousand-square-foot to 1,200-square-foot home in order to have two kids, and it could be, on the basis of a second-unit dwelling, that it would actually put them in that, you know, availability to them. So, that's one of my main concerns, actually, is, where does the teacher comes into town, where do they live, if they, you know, what can they afford to live in a community like this? And what's available to them at the current costs? And, you know, I believe that second-unit dwellings may provide one of the answers to that, just because it is, to a certain degree, it is affordability by design, because it's going to be a smaller house. So, those are, I think that's worthy of discussion in and of its own right. Yeah, go ahead, Chester. We'll get around to everybody.
I just want to clarify, Kathleen, I mean, that's kind of what I was saying. Did you hear, I'm just trying to, because to me, you're saying, the general plan and the housing element is, that's what sets our priorities, right? And that's all I was talking about, was affordability by design.
Mm-hmm. Chester, I'm sorry, Chester, but I was going to, Chester was using the word affordability in the housing element, and it's not, it's not an arbitrary term, it's a well-defined term, affordability. It's usually, the property is usually deed restricted and limited to those people who qualify for that income level.
So, is that back to John's point, that this, that's
From the beginning.
From the beginning, that you're using affordability, is the affordability that's discussed here an indentured, okay? But, so, it has to meet that? In other words, it's not just about the fact of providing affordable, I don't know how to use a different word, but properties that meet these guidelines, you know, they don't have to be restricted to that, but that meets a guideline for somebody who needs something below $2,000 a month, and that meets extremely low, very low and low?
Okay, so, whenever you go into your housing inventory, you have to always identify those that are deed restricted. If you go into some of the things I didn't provide in here, because I tried to clip out the things that were specifically asked to provide, and there was dialogue on the previous meeting. But you get into, you know, those at risk, because even like Whispering Oaks would have, you know, certain, maybe not Whispering Oaks, but other projects in other cities, they have a 50-year, usually deed restriction on them. So, whatever you gave them, whatever quid pro quo you gave them to do affordable deed restriction, you have to give them something. A person would never deed restrict a property for low income without some kind of offset. You know, it's usually a long-term deed restriction you have on there, all right? And so, they're identified in your housing element for which ones are at risk, and when they're going to sunset out, that's kind of all in one thing. So, when they talked about, when this new concept of having second units provide to meet some of your RENA, that's a new concept, that's kind of like the last housing element and this housing element, because people were just struggling, how do I do this now? So, they were struggling. And I believe it's like how Vena was speaking of, that it was affordable by design, okay?
And you're using these numbers.
And that would be, you know, looking at if you're making it bigger, are you, but when you're saying these things, like, when you, I'm just trying to explain that, when you say that you're making a house 1,200 square feet or whatever, three-bedroom, two-bath, and it's a family of four, and a family of four inherit can, I think it says, afford whatever it was, so, low was 1,780, that's the max they can pay, you know? How are you going to, how are you going to assure the city that now you've provided these units and they're affordable, because you have no controls over what it's going to rent for? I'm just trying to make sure that everybody understands that, that we're not trying to mislead the public, that this ordinance is somehow going to facilitate somebody building an affordable unit, because it doesn't do that. They can build a 1,200-square-foot unit, which has stainless steel appliances and granite and marble, and it can be totally unaffordable. So, I just want to make sure that we're not, that we're very clear what we're trying to do, because if you wanted to make it affordable, you're going to start putting things in there all of a sudden that are going to say, you can't do this, and you can't do that, and you can't do this, and you can't do that. And so, for me, for me to provide that, for you to know how to move forward with this, I have to know what your overall goal, you're trying to accomplish more units in the city of Ojai, and then I can, and I can start then helping you with the policies, or affordable. And affordable, the only way that I can see that is to do it affordable by design and keep it small, because square foot equates to higher rents. And then, you know, that's all I can really help you do, and if we can't get over that hurdle, it's difficult for me.
Isn't that our mandate?
What, more affordable?
Properties that more people can afford. However, though, by design is the way that, is the only way we can do it. We're not talking about restricting anything, deed restricting anything. I mean, maybe we are, but, you know, I just
Well, we're also talking about increasing the inventory and the supply and demand, because that does bring the should and could, well, could, again, we're creating an environment here, we're not, we can't guarantee anything, but we can do what we can do with the second dwelling, which is one of the few options we have. I mean, we don't have a whole lot of options.
I just don't see enough of them being created to affect inventory.
Well, that's why if you remove, right, so the idea, then, is to remove the impediments to try to encourage that. And if you're going to keep impediments to it, and that's what the whole AB 1688 was about, removing impediments. And what we did is we added impediments, a whole bunch of them, in 2003. And so
Well, it's expensive, and the only way to make it less expensive is to make them bigger, to make it make more sense. But then, that's because the rents go up. The rents go up, that's what makes the impediment go away, is the rent goes up. The main impediment is the cost of to build it, and not being able to rent it for enough for it to make sense. The main impediment is the cost of the build, to build it, and not being able to rent it for enough for it to make sense.
But there's other, there's other, if we, if we, what I mean by removing the impediments, I don't mean, mean that, that there is no option for, like Vina was talking about, options to do possible plans, low square foot plans that are set in the city so they can hand out like they do for garages and other areas so that individuals don't have to go through that whole expense of hiring an engineer, an architect for somewhat of a simple design. So there's other things that, that can be done to offset that.
So can I ask what other impediments that, that you're looking, that you keep and say other impediments?
Well, it's, well, if you look through AB 1688, they're all over the place. There's the square, there's the size of the square foot of the lot, that's impediment. It's 5,000 was in AB 1688, and then we increased it to 10,800, I don't know, whatever it is, but we went to 10,000. That's one impediment, that's one restriction. Okay, we, there was an option here to, I, I think there's, let me look at my notes here for a second. Okay, the consideration of allowing both a guest house and a second unit on a property. That's certainly allowed in AB 1688, but we took that away in our ordinance of 2003. Should variances be allowed? That's allowed in 1688, but it's not allowed in our, that's an impediment. Let's see, what other impediments do I find? Parking, in parking in the, in the setbacks in the front yard. That's allowed in 1688, but we created impediments. So you want me to keep going?
Well, I, no, yeah, I think you guys should just talk about, you just, whatever you want, I mean, we're getting late in the hour here and whatever you want me to do, this takes a considerable amount of time, you know, we're all constrained with staff time here. It takes a considerable amount of time for us to research this. I just want to help facilitate you getting something so that I can get something back to you. I just, I just want to say that most of these things that you're, that you are designing for, that you're enumerating right now to me, are things that if you feel that those are warranted, then they should also be warranted for general house building. Because I don't, I don't know why they're impediment, I mean, you know, if, if we're going to do that, we're going to say, well, then I guess everyone doesn't have to build a garage and they can park. I mean, if that's where we're going with increasing housing and making it easier to build houses throughout the community.
Yeah, but we don't have the lots here. We don't have that in Ojai, so it doesn't make any sense.
But I'm, I'm just saying, so, you know, if you're just telling me, I'm, I'm only offering up, you know, all these things that you're offering also are impediments to just general.
Yeah, but we don't have that many open lots, see, so it doesn't, doesn't equate to me. What we have is existing, many existing homes with the opportunity to build second dwellings, okay? That is in character with Ojai to increase the rental.
We can cer, I mean, I can certainly, I mean, I don't, I think we can all talk about variances and we can get down there with that very simply. So what else is it, I mean, do you want to help me facilitate this? I just need to know.
It's all over the map, but go ahead.
I was just going to say, I would like to make a proposal that we consider, going back to what our goal is, and I think I'm going to put out on the table that our goal would be to increase the housing stock. Then if we
By removing impediments, that's
By removing impediments, and then we'll see where, if everyone's in agreement or not. Then the next step would be, you know, let's define what that is and then we can go to the next layer. Because I think we're kind of, I mean, I think everything's good and I, I like the conversation. But I agree that I think we need to get moving through this.
We had to move through the affordability issue and then within, I think I have a better understanding, you know, what, what the pros and cons of that are as, as given this direction in terms of establishing what we're talking about now.
So, yeah, I, I have a, I have a suggestion. I completely agree with Commissioner Nolan. I second that. I agree that our goal should be to increase the housing stock by reducing impediments. I also would like to point to the second, an attachment F in the back of your packet. The city of Danville, I know Rose Lee has some concerns because Danville has 43,582 people and we have eight thou, whatever. But I find a number of the question, or a number of the questions that were raised in the beginning of this, of our section are addressed in Danville's second unit ordinance. They have bedrooms, they talk about square footage, they talk about parking, on-street, off-street parking, they talk about deed restrictions. They even ha, I mean, they even like talk about lot size. You know, you can have, your second dwelling can be up to 2,000 square feet if your lot is over 40,000 square feet. I mean, these are just, I think, interesting things. I think that might give us a platform to reference off of. So maybe that might offer guidance, maybe not, not, I'm not saying tonight because I think we need to reach some resolution soon, or we could talk here till midnight easily.
I was going to say, I agree that after going through the documents and I read through the three different cities' second unit ordinances. And I agree that, not that they necessarily agreed with everything in the Danville one, but I thought it was very clear and concise and that I could imagine, you know, we could go through each item and have our input. But I think of the three, I tended to resonate with the, maybe the integrity, but the breadth of the ordinance. And I also wanted to make the comment, yeah, it's, you know, about five times, I actually went on and looked up the demographics of Danville. My sister happens to live there, she's lived up in that area for years. So it's like five times the size of Ojai. It's, it has a similar history, you know, the agricultural background. The downtown is very walkable, it's very quaint, you know, and ours is like one-fifth the size of it. I've walked through Danville. So in a sense, I saw a lot of similarities. They also had probably some newer housing than we did. But I could see that, you know, if you took a little section of Danville, it could kind of reflect. You know, they, they actually have a portion in here about heritage trees, which is really important here in Ojai too. So, yeah, the question was, you know, how do we start and do we go through one document? But I agree with Mac that this tended to resonate with me the most.
Okay, well, I guess.
Well, I have this really interesting question. Since we went from AB 1688 to the ordinance of 2003 by adding more restrictions, why aren't we going right back to AB 1688 and just adopting, you know, those? Well, that's what I mean. It's fairly, and go start from there instead of starting from the place where all the impediments are. You know, let's go back to where they're not. And that was what revelation I came to after reading all of this, is that all that was created to create impediments. Yeah, no, it was created, the 2003, they created those limitations purposely. And, you know, and so now we're looking at uncreating them. So let's say that we have AB 1688 as our guideline, it's the state law, you know, and see what in that document is unacceptable to us as Ojai. You know, to me, that seems like a better approach than going from a document that we are now trying to
Good idea. Right, sure. It gives us a guidepost to work through the issues with.
Right.
And, you know, these
And it's easy to identify each one of those questions if you just go back to 1688 and see what the rule is. And then we can then agree is that, well, I think we can, what we can do is possibly, you know, continue this to the next meeting with a little bit of homework, right? Where we, 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 we maybe have Kathleen put together something where we Is this document in here, by the way, on the 4 of 19, Assembly Bill 1866, is that the actual bill in here? The one, the copy that you gave us?
I believe so. I have to look at it again. What attachment is it?
It's eight, it's attachment, I can't see four.
Are you going to attachment E?
It's attachment E.
Yes. Yeah. That's the actual document that's, that kind of started all this. So can, yeah, and I went through it pretty extensively myself.
So what are you asking Kathleen to present?
Well, I don't have, you're saying E, for me, E is
Attachment E 419.
419.
It's handwritten.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, so if we go back to the core questions that were asked of us at the beginning, and we go down the line and answer those questions based on what, well, we can do this, I've done this myself. But I, I don't know if we, you know, if it might be good that Kathleen, you know, does this little exercise because then we can all be on the same page. But starting with that, looking at those questions and see how, what the, what state law allows. And then in those cases, and then we can look through each one of those questions and determine whether we want to increase or create more impediments to that.
I agree. I think it's a, it's a good beginning, good place to begin. And you're suggesting though Kathleen should address that, or?
Yeah, I'm, I'm totally lost. I mean, if you guys want to just adopt state law, you know, that's totally within your boundaries.
We'd like to, we'd like to, I like to analyze it more, but I
I just think that
I, I can't hire, I mean, I, I've done it to the degree I've done it, and I can go over my notes about it.
Well, I know I need to spend more time
And we can all, what I'm saying is, well, forget Kathleen, say she's too busy, but let's all look at that.
All right.
Now, are you talking about these questions you had, should the units be increased? Well, I think that's, that's all in the frame of Ojai. If you're looking just to do the state, the state law, I mean, I can't answer for the community.
No, I mean, what I'm saying, I'm not answering, it's all very, to me, clear and linear. It's what does AB 1866 say about parking, okay? That's what I want to know. What does it say about variances? So that way
It frames the question for us to discuss.
And then we can, we can then address the question with, with state law and then determine, and we can then look at what our, our existing ordinance says and determine very clearly whether we want to go back to state law on that issue.
Can I suggest that we come back and I, I personally need more time to study that document? And I hope to do as good a thorough job as you have, but that would really give me some substance to work from.
It's very enlightening when you go back to it.
Right. I think I read it once, but it's been a while now.
I think, I think the only, I think that that's fine and, and, you know, you have to understand that, just so, and I like to frame this for you guys quite often, is that when we have planning commission meetings every two weeks, we have to already have in our work program what we're doing because two weeks, we don't have two weeks to do our reports. We only have a week. And right now, this week, and I'm not trying to complain, but I'm doing three agendas, one for city council, one for HBC and one for PC. So, you know, this week's done for me. So, you know, the, our agenda for the 18th is already framed into the work program for all the people that are working for me myself. So to give me something, and I'm, and I'm not trying to complain about being overworked, although we all are. I'm just trying to say that it almost is impossible to get you something that thoroughly analyzed in two weeks because it's not two weeks.
Yeah, no, I wasn't suggesting, I wasn't asking in two weeks. I was saying at a, at a future date, having that framework, I think will give us a better outline to proceed with a very
I think we're all on the same page on that. I mean, it's a, we, we have to come, start with common ground and that's a, it's as good as any place to start. I mean, it's the state law and Rose Lee has a
Totally. I just think, you know, we just, I, I think we can all study, study it ourselves and then, and just have, have the ability to just know that at our, whenever we put this, if it's next time or whatever, that, that we'll have a Q and A with you so that we can, we can ask you, you know, what, what comes up for us and if you don't, is that, is that
No, that's fine. That's fine. I think, I think when you start to look at what you want to remove, then staff can come back with how that fits and pushes, pulls other sections of the code. Because anything that you touch will eventually push and pull other sections of the code, as we all know. And, and that's, that's where the issue comes with all of it. So, so, you know.
We won't expect you to know all the ins and outs, but just do, you know, like you can all, you can say, and then there's factor X, which I have, you know, which, which will lead to then, you know, getting it on the schedule with everything else as it makes sense with development's priorities to flesh it out. You know, I mean, I do think we, you know, this is not a burning issue. I mean, it's a priority, but it's not a burning issue and it does need to be, yeah.
That's a great point, Rose Lee. This is not something we have to come to terms with before the end of the year.
Right. I think maybe
We shouldn't feel pressured that we have to because we need to be thorough about this.
Absolutely.
I think one of the things that might help you too is, is, you know, I think Sherri, we've, what, we've done 20 compliance units? And I would think maybe you should look at those site plans and how they're coming in. Because, you know, how are they, why were they not able to get legitimized the first time around and what were the issues that they had? Because that would help you too. I mean, like I looked at one today, it was 12, it was, I don't know, what was that one? About 1,000 square feet that I looked at today? 880 and, you know, and there was parking for the main unit, but not parking for the second unit except in the front driveway, which is, it's not parking with, parking within the front yard setback sounds to me like someone's parking on the grass, you know. I mean, I, I just can't see Ojai being okay with that. But really what it means is parking in the driveway, which is what people do anyway. So I think maybe if you looked at some of the issues people have, it might help you. And we can, we can, we can make copies of the site plans and give them to you and say, hey, well, this, this is, this is the 20 we've done and this is what they look like.
Well, it's representative of where we live. That's the value of it.
I think that might help. Yes.
Okay, open for that. Other than that, it just becomes a continuation of the discussion, right?
Right, I can do those for you. I mean, that's easy to copy that and get that off for you. Then that will give you an idea of why these people didn't legitimize their units to begin with the first time around. You know, were they too big? Could they not meet parking? That type of thing.
Hey, I'd like to clarify though, one more time so I'm clear on what Kathleen's going to do and when. Only because I'm, you know, I, first of all, I, I just, with that said
Even as a place to our next meeting?
Exactly. And when we're going to, when we're going to do it, just so I could table it in my own mind.
Well, the way I see it, our, our next meeting, we'll continue this discussion.
Oh, I see. That's what we're going to do. And then we're going to
Use the, what is it, 16?
88.
1688.
So we're going to do that ourselves. Okay, good. Yeah, because I've already, I've already done it. I was actually prepared to talk about that tonight.
So you guys are ahead of the curve, at least as far as I'm concerned. And I, I just would like to spend some more time with it. And, and we did work through some issues, so that, that's all good.
I think what staff would probably try to do for you is, the assembly bills and even the California codes, you know, regulations are sometimes wordy. Because I'm sure they have lots of lawyers that, that write them for them. So maybe we could just make a matrix that says what is the size allowed, what parking, what does it say?
Exactly. That's exactly what I was asking for. Thank you.
Just channeling you?
The matrix.
So, so maybe
About to applaud again.
No, thanks. So anyway, so maybe it's not, so maybe it's so, sometimes it hurts your head trying to decipher. Okay, can't you just put a matrix in that says sizes need to be between this and this and this and that?
Yeah, state law says this, this is what we want to do.
Yeah, we could probably do that for you.
That's exactly what I was asking for in really bad language.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So you, you definitely had to channeled it perfectly. Thank you.
Is that something that you can work in before our next meeting?
That's probably not that hard for us to do that. I mean, that's, you know, that's basically just saying, why should all this get brain headaches from reading, trying to decipher what they do and just put it in and distill it down for you. That's really doable.
So we have direction, right?
I'm happy.
All right, so
I'm glad.
We'll move on then to our director's report and director's action.
Steve, could I make some comments before we move on?
Oh, absolutely.
I'm a little concerned that Roseberry brought up our, our mandate as a planning commission. I think we're getting away from that with this emphasis on making housing affordable and increasing the housing stock. I think our real job as a planning commission is to make sure that we have regulations in place that are fair and consistent for all the properties in the city. And it's really not our, it's the city council's job to solve the affordable housing problem. They're the ones that are going to have to come up with some mechanism for doing this, some way of financing it, a process. And I'm also concerned, you know, we're, we're playing to an empty house here. We, we have no public participation. And I am just hearing in my mind, people like Stan Green who would get up here and say, you can't increase the density in Ojai at all because it's already too dense. We already have too many people here. We need to, you know, there's, there's We need to, you know, there's, there's a, a large portion of the population, I mean, we have young people coming in who are saying, well, where can I live? But you also have another group of people who, who really want to, as it says in general plan, preserve the small-town character of Ojai. And part of that is keeping the density that we have right now, and not saying, oh, we're gonna throw all these extra units in here because as soon as you do that, then you have cars, you have traffic, you have all the problems that go with that. So I think we need to keep that in mind as we go ahead. I, I don't know that it is our purview to say, we're gonna come up with an affordable housing plan for the city. It's really, how can we set up some regulations so that people can build these units if they want to, but we're not saying, we want everybody to go out and build a second unit in their backyard or something like that.
Right.
So I just wanted to get that out there.
I agree with you, John. It's well said, and that's the focus. We can be easily distracted with the needs of the community when that's not our purviewed address.
It's really kind of weird having these meetings and having so little public input because we're just talking amongst ourselves.
Right.
We really don't know what.
Well, and I assume, or I hope, my hope is that as, as this develops and the conversation gets deeper, now that we, we'll probably, you know, have that opportunity.
Hopefully, hopefully more people show up.
I would certainly hope that public would join in on us with, and that particular discussion, so.
Can I ask John, can I ask John one question?
Yeah.
So John, you've been doing this forever, so, so how, I totally get what you're saying, and I, I think we're kind of, anyway, but how do your comments relate to, if we've been tasked with this, right or wrong, we've been tasked with this, are we not supposed to follow the general plan, which is saying, you know, we are supposed to provide, we're supposed to be trying to provide gaps in the housing? I mean, whether we should have the task or not, it's been tasked to us. So how, how does your comment relate to what the data is telling us about where the housing gaps are? Do we just ignore that?
Well.
Because we're supposed to follow the general plan.
Yeah. It just seems to me that if, if what we're saying is, we really want to have a lot more units built in Ojai, I don't know that that needs to come from us. That should be something that the city council or somebody comes through and says, we want to build a whole bunch more places in Ojai, and I'm not really hearing people saying that.
John, yeah, I, and I agree with your, with what you're saying, and I was the one who said about increasing the housing stock, but I, and I think what you said actually is right. We are working on, through the ordinance, creating the environment so that if somebody wants to do it.
Exactly.
They can do it, and we're, we're making it so it's, you know, it's doable.
And at the same time.
Right.
If their neighbors don't want them to do that, they have some mechanism to say.
Exactly, we don't want it.
Or we don't want, or at least if it's done, it's done in a way that fits in with the character of the neighborhood.
Exactly.
You know, we, we've talked a lot about the two thousand and three meeting. Those regulations came from a fear on the part of the commission back then, you know, the state came down with these regulations saying, you can't regulate second units. And we're like, what do you mean? They said, you know, anybody can build a second unit, anyplace they want to, it's, it's, that's what sixteen eighty-eight is all about. And as a planning commission, we were like, well, oh my God, what if somebody just, you know, my next-door neighbor builds a second unit in their backyard? I want to have some control over that. So that's, that's where these regulations came from originally. That's why we kept the size small. And there are also regulations in there about matching the style of the main house, that sort of thing. I mean, that was our biggest concern right then, was that, you know, that there would be just sort of this, that we wouldn't have any control over where things were getting built and how they were getting built, and that, that would really cause more problems than.
A sprawl of sorts of second dwelling units.
Yeah, yeah, and then you had, you know, you, I mean, you're kind of talking about doubling the population of the town if you, everybody had a second unit in their backyard, and.
Yeah, but we all know that it's expensive to build one.
Well, and it's, and it's not possible on most of these lots, I mean, you just don't have the, the size, but I mean, you are increasing the density, and that's a big question, do we want to do that or not? You know, a lot of people say no.
Well, I think your historical perspective is going to be very, you know, contribute a lot to the discussion.
Yeah.
That's great.
Well, the question I have is, on that, is that, do we want to increase the density? Well, it sounds like we're being asked to do that by, based on the general plan, by the housing element, correct?
Or to make it available to.
That's right.
The housing element says that we, we have.
To make available.
There, we, you know, and by.
And to remove impediments.
Meeting the requirements of that housing element, we, we designated lots within the city so that we know that we have the capability to do that. But it doesn't say that they have to get built, or that the city has to do it, it just says the capability is there.
Mm-hmm, got it.
I think you need to remember too, that with the general plan, and I know this is gonna, and I'm just gonna stir it up and make it all more complex, right? But the general plan talks about many things. So sometimes in achieving one goal, you've now pushed on another goal. So it might say, retain the small-town character of Ojai, and then it says, oh, but provide opportunities for housing. And so that's what John is trying to explain, is that when you take all those goals together, and then you put them in, you know, a bag called Ojai, how do we do all these things that Ojai way? So it might not just be allowing the state to come in and say, well, here's what the state says you should do, and that's, that's a one-fits-all for the whole state of California. The state also says, hey, you can adopt our ordinance, or you can create one specifically for your town, but here's what we tell you the minimum has to have. And that's what Ojai did the first time. And that means they kind of weighed the balance between providing housing opportunities and not having impacts that, that, you know, to increase them to the point that it impacts the neighborhood. So that's why, you know, there's setbacks in design, criteria, and et cetera, et cetera. So I think at any point, you can't take one thing at the expense of something else. It is really always a push-pull with all the policies. And we hear that all the time from people that say, well, your general plan says this, but it says a lot of things, and that's what you guys are tasked with, is trying to come and, and take all of those together and say, how does that really fit for Ojai?
Perfect.
Okay?
And you'll keep us on the right track, right?
That's right.
Okay. Are we ready to move on? Okay. Well, go ahead, Maggie, you have something to do.
I was gonna be sarcastic that we couldn't talk until midnight.
Go ahead.
Sarcasm is allowed, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's allowed.
All right.
Do you like me to do the director's?
Yeah, informational items, please.
Okay, so the director's decision, again, we, we tend to have a lot of oak tree issues, as we all know. No, no sense going over that, we all know why that's happening. And we have given miscellaneous permits for address assignments. And I was just asked by the city manager to try to bring forward how many people have actually applied for the compliance program, so when I'm doing that, I'll make sure that you guys all get copies of that too, the number of units, et cetera. So moving forward, the active code enforcement log, you know, I don't think, I think that we're, I'm gonna reiterate what I say all the time, is we're trying to be diligent about moving things off of the code enforcement list and not letting them languish, languish. As you know, the city council put a moratorium on, or maybe you don't, I'm not sure, the hedge height enforcement at this point, and they're gonna be taking that, that issue up at the next city council meeting. I think, well, maybe not the next, but the next one after that, I think, the seventeenth. They're coming so fast, I'm not really sure, they're having a city council meeting on November seventeenth in lieu of the one that was scheduled for the week of the holidays. So we've kind of compacted the, the city council agenda, so that will be coming forward quickly, though. And I, and then finally, I guess I'm moving on to the next upcoming agendas. As you know, today was the deadline for California Solar to submit. Ms. Herbert, did they do that? No, okay. So that's the information for there. November eighteenth, we will have, we had scheduled continuing care center replacement for the, for the hospital, but they've asked that to be once again moved off. We like to accommodate our applicants. And then it'll also be four oh nine Fox Street, which is the Ojai Valley Athletic Club, and they were doing carports. It's important that they move forward, as you know, that a lot of the rebates for solar is, are coming to a conclusion, so we need to get them done, and so I hope that, if there's somebody that's not gonna be there on the eighteenth, they would let me know, so we make sure we have a quorum for them. And I think that's about all. We're, we're still working on those projects as, as we detail for you. And I will say, oh, I'm sorry, also on the eighteenth, we have going for you a concept review plan for the bowling alley. We have people coming in with a concept, and they want to get your feedback on that, and they're, they're very anxious. And I talked with them again today, and they will be doing a PowerPoint for you on their concept, and looking for some feedback before they actually form, you know, form up their ideas, and they've done a lot of neighborhood outreach out there with the bowling alley. So that's all. So a lot of these things, kind of, we kind of agendize them after we've already done this list, so I apologize if it's not on there for you, but I think that's it, right, Sheri? Does that sound right? Okay. And with that, I'll leave it to you to do the rotation list.
Thank you. So we're at the point of doing our liaison reports. Evidently, there wasn't a MAC meeting on the sixteenth, correct? Is that, is that true? Okay, then, I actually attended the city council meeting of October twenty-seventh, and it was interesting because the majority of the time was spent in public comment, and I would say close to two hours, which left not a whole lot of time to discuss some of the other items. But the main concern that repeated itself continually, and I think I got about over twenty comments, it was all about hedge cutting. There is a definite opinion amongst the public that, that needs to be reckoned with, and I believe it's coming back to city council, and maybe Mayor Lara will address that. Then there were, there were some other items on there, I think, let's see, I have a building proposal for a building inspection contract is coming before the, before the city, but that was actually tabled at this point. There were some other business matters, pension, that sort of thing. A tree ordinance amendment is going to be continued to the December eighth meeting. That's, that's, that's probably it in a real general sense, so. Let's go on to.
I was gonna ask you.
Okay.
I, now I'm switching with Chester.
You're right, so we've been moving around unbeknownst to Sheri.
Yeah, no, so, so Chester is gonna take the November tenth city council, and I'm gonna do November twenty-fourth. Thank you, Chester.
Wait, you're. We're gonna hold our breath. It did, it's the seventeen.
It's the seventeenth.
That's what I just said a minute ago.
Yeah.
It's the seventeen. It's November seventeen. I said they canceled the meeting the week of Thanksgiving, and they've now moved it to the seventeenth. That's why I said I'm a little confused, but I'm, I'm working on so many staff.
One after another, one week after another, the tenth and.
Yes, that's why I'm a little confused.
Yeah, that's cramming it.
Rosalie, can you go to the seventeenth?
Yes.
Okay.
Chair Foster, I also wanted to, to also let the planning commission know that we're taking a concept review to city council also on the seventeenth for three-three-four East Ojai, which is the, the little area between Betty Lou's and the old thrift shop. And the reason it's going to city council is because they were asking the city to do a land swap, and we need to take that to city council first. So I just wanted to explain to everybody why it's not coming to you.
So based on what happens there, we may see it coming.
Well, we're, they're asking as a property owner, and that, that really then goes to city council. So just so that you understand why we're bypassing you at this point, it really has to have, you know, kind of a blessing from the, the people who act as the property owner to give permission.
Okay.
Just wanted to explain that.
Thanks for the clarification. Okay, Commissioner Nolan, you want to talk to us about complete streets?
Yes, we met today, and we're continuing to work through the first round of the draft master plan, so we're just kind of doing editing, adding a couple of things. And then when that gets done, it's going to be released, you know, for the public, we'll probably end up having some, maybe a workshop again. And then I know I've announced this twice, but I'm gonna have to say it for the third time, our Bike to School Week date changed again. And it only had to do with, the Public Works Department was so busy with the playground project in Ojai Day and what have you, that it became a little prohibitive. So it, it's official now, it's gonna be November sixteenth through the twentieth. And basically, we're targeting an area on Grand Avenue, and that's where we're gonna be doing the Bike to School Week. And quite a few of us have volunteered, we're gonna be going out and collecting data in the morning. And anyway, I think it'll be very successful, and we're looking forward to it. And then I always like to announce that we meet the first Wednesday of the month, two-thirty to four-thirty here in, at City Hall in the conference room, and that would be, our next meeting is December second. Thank you.
All right, well, this evening.
Just about the sustainable building committee.
Oh, it was on here, okay.
Yeah, sorry. Just, I got a great group of people so far interested, I'm just looking for city council to place it on the agenda for the approval, so hopefully Mayor Lara can speak to that, about when we can look forward to that, and then I'll be able to officially, or move forward.
Okay. Mayor Lara.
Good evening, commissioners, chair, staff. I appreciate all the dialogue you guys have been having, very interesting, and to see how the second unit concept came into play in two thousand and three, state law, everything. I know it is complicated and confusing and complex because it comes from different triggers, from state to what it means in Ojai, to our general plan, to affordability, meeting with arena numbers, so it, it does come kind of overwhelming. And I think Ms. Wald did a wonderful job in explaining it and separating the issue and where they fall into place, because it's all is related in one way or another, but they are apples and oranges, in a sense, too. So it's, it's a little complex. And it's taken me a while to learn about that. I just want to make a side note, I will be attending, I am on the policy committee for the SCAG that does allocate arena numbers, and every, every two years, we update the RTP slash SCS, which means the regional transportation plan slash sustainable community strategy. And these is, this is really important because we update data. We update, it's a planning region, planning agency that includes Ventura County, San, Ventura County, LA County, Imperial County, San Bernardino County, and Riverside County, et cetera, for San Diego County. And so it's important that we look at all the, this data that they're collecting and how it affects Ojai. And it has, it does affect Ojai in many ways. They look at components of transportation. They look at components of demographics, economic data. They look at aviation, they look at trains. So it's, it's a wide variety of things that we look at. And in the sense, that data then is taken by the state, and then they come back and they start implementing things that they, that we need. And that's how it all trickles down. So it is important to start participating and to have an influence on that agency. And I'm trying to do my due diligence with, with adding Ojai in there and Ventura County, what it means to us. And, and they do a fantastic job too, and trying to interact. And that's when the elected officials really have to bring forward our policy. For example, Ventura County with SOAR, our general plan, et cetera. It's, it's our job to keep them educated too. And that's how it all comes together. So I'll be joint, I'll be doing that tomorrow in LA. As far as city council goes, we do have a few items coming up, which includes the vacation rentals, which is the biggest one. I'm, I'm sure we're gonna have a lot of input on that issue. We're gonna be leaving that till the very end. Before that, we will, we'll be addressing a couple of other issues. We'll be talking about the agreement with Sterling Venue Ventures for the Livy Bowl operation. So I'm sure we're gonna have a lively debate over that and where we're at and how the council feels. And then we are also gonna be appointing new parks and recreation commissioners at that, at that meeting. We'll also be hearing a presentation from Direct Energy Solar by Wayne Pendry. I think he has a, a great program. And, and I'm curious to see what it's all about. We'll be having that presentation up on the website soon. Future items, I do have that on the list. We have a very full agenda in, in November again. And so December, I'll talk to Paul, pass him that list. Hopefully, we could get it on the agenda for December. I know we have one meeting right now in December. We're very ambitious, so we want to do a lot. That's why we decided to add another meeting in November and cancel the one closer to the holidays, because we do have a lot of items to discuss. Other than that, I, I think that's about it. We do have a joint meeting with the Arts Commission. They usually do a great job updating us where they're at in their programming, on their projects that they put on during the year. And other than that, if you guys have any questions for me, if not, then a fantastic job. Yes.
I went to the cultural resources workshop that you had. And, you know, people have come up to me since then who watched it and said that, that their, their question to me is about the archaeologist. So, you know, is that, is that person an advocate for the tribe? Or is he, is, you know, is this, is he an arms-length expert? Or is he an advocate for the tribe?
No, he's an expert. He, he works, I forget what, wait, agency he's part of? Green? Greenwood? I think so. I, I don't, I can't, I can't remember. But no, he's here to educate us on his field. He's not an advocate for the tribal. He leaves that. He, it's separate from what Julie and Pat are. They're, they're experts in cultural resources. He's an expert in archaeology. And so he's here educating us what that means in his field and how it all affects Ojai. So he's part, he, he focuses in archaeology here in this region. The, good question. And, and we are working, we did meet earlier this week to talk about our next, next step. So we will be talking about a, a potential policy implementation. I think in, in, for the seventeenth of November, it's still an option. If not, then in December, we'll be talking about that. But that will be coming to the, the council soon. Any other questions?
Questions for the mayor? Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Chair.
Comments? Summaries? Good. Meeting adjourned.